Number one, welcome to the October, the third meeting of the Baldwin County Commission. And at this time, I've asked the Honorable Judge Russell if he would lead us into invocation, followed by the pledge from Commissioner Ball. If you have no objection, will you join me in prayer? Heavenly Father, thank you for the gift of this great county and this great state and this great country. You have blessed us with so many beautiful resources in Baldwin County, so many beautiful people, so many beautiful families. Help us to strive to attain those goals that are common with the goals that you have established for us on this earth. Guide us and lead us. Help us all to be good and loving citizens and support each other as we journey through this life's journey toward our eternal goal in happiness in heaven. In your name we pray. Will you join me in the pledge, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll get started. First thing on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the September the 19th of 2023, a regular meeting, and September 28, 2023, a special meeting for the budget.
I'll make that motion that we approve those minutes of the both meetings.
Second. Got a motion made by Commissioner Underwood, seconded by Commissioner Ball to approve the minutes from the two previous meetings. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Next.
Yes, sir. We have the consent agenda. Would like to note out that items GA1, GA2, and also HA1 have been moved up into the consent agenda.
We got committee report.
Oh, excuse me, sorry.
You ain't got but one more time to skip me. Then you can skip mine.
I'm sorry, it's the yellow, I just jumped right to the yellow. I'm sorry about that.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve payment of the bills and distribution of taxes, which are listed in the Baldwin County Accounts payable payments.
Second. Got a motion made by Commissioner Underwood, seconded by Commissioner Ball to pay the bills as described in the ledger. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Next.
Okay, I guarantee that'll be the last time I do that.
Never say never.
I try, no, I try to learn from my mistakes. I'm gonna guarantee I will not do that again. All right, consent agendas, I noted GA1, GA2, and also HA1 have been moved up to consent agenda. And also one other note, CE3 had a note of the contingent on county attorney approval, and he's indicated that he has approved it. So the consent agenda is, other than those changes, is still the same as was presented yesterday for your approval.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion, we approve the consent agenda with the changes noted by our administrator.
Second. Got a motion made by Commissioner Underwood, seconded by Commissioner McKenzie to approve the consent agenda and the changes that were made yesterday. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Next.
Okay, next we have presentations. First up is a resolution in support of the Baldwin County Historical Society. Okay, we have Resolution 2023 dash 007 of the Baldwin County Commission. In support of the Baldwin County Historical Society. Whereas the Baldwin County Historical Society was founded in Fairhope, Alabama, September 12th, 1923, as a nonprofit organization, the society's mission is to bring together the citizens of Baldwin County to ensure the preservation of our rich heritage for prosperity. And whereas Ms. Linda Newcombe Cummings and Ms. Martha Albers were the driving force behind the early organization, the Honorable Peter A. Brennan, curator of the Alabama Department of Archives and History, was instrumental in the formation of the Alabama Department of Archives and Historic in history, declared the Baldwin County Historical Society the first of its kind in the state of Alabama. And where is on October 19, 23, the first annual meeting of the Baldwin County Historical Society was held at the site of the ghost town of Blakely. And whereas officers and other members of the Baldwin County Historical Society actively pursue the preservation of cemeteries in Baldwin County and produce articles of historical interest written by the members and shared throughout the public media in a publication entitled "The Quarterly." And whereas the Baldwin County Historical Society was incorporated 2023 in the state of Alabama, the Historical Society has been a vital part of the heritage of Baldwin County, Alabama for 100 years. And whereas, centennial period of reflection and commemoration has been scheduled to acknowledge the service of the Baldwin County Historical Society to the Baldwin County citizens, a commemoration celebration will be held on Sunday, October 22nd, 2023, at the historic Blakely State Park. And a marble monument will be installed at Blakely to commemorate the founding of the society. Now therefore, it be, now therefore, here be proclaimed by the Baldwin County Commission during its regularly scheduled meeting on October 3rd, 2023, that by this action, the Baldwin County Commission endorses the efforts of the Baldwin County Historical Society and hereby resolves to aid in the promotion, promoting and executing of the Historical Society's historic educational celebratory and cultural initiatives by supporting the community celebration to observe and commemorate the centennial of the Historical Society, done under the seal of Baldwin County, Alabama, as of this day, the third day of October 2023.
Here, I want to present y'all with this resolution, this 2023-007 of the Baldwin County Commission, which supports the Baldwin County Historical Society. I know y'all have got a meeting coming up shortly, and you know, Baldwin County is so rich in history, and people don't realize what's really here until you get out and look and just ride around and see all the stuff. I mean, we got markers showing a lot of, a lot of historical stuff that's happened. So I just turn a little bit y'all. Thank you very much.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Okay, history nerds, 100 years ago, the faces and places of our society founders traces two liberians and other prominent county leaders as they organized the first Alabama County Historical Society. Today, we want to congratulate, well, we were gonna present plaques to Harriet Outlaw and Perry Outlaw, the current presidents, but Harriet had a fall, but she did send some people to represent for her. So we want to, on behalf of the commission, say congratulations to the Historical Society. This is a significant year for you as you celebrate an important service anniversary with the Baldwin County Historical Society. We acknowledge and appreciate you guys for your commitment to historic preservation. Thank you for the many years of service and dedication to making the mission, vision, and values come true every day. As you celebrate 100 years of service, it is with great pride that we present service awards to you for your dedication, which is a symbol of your personal and professional achievements. It is our hope that you will display it with pride. Our people are and always will be our greatest asset. Please know that you are important members of our county, and your abilities and contributions will be an important part of this county's continued success. Thank you for all you do, and please accept our good wishes for the 100th anniversary of the Historical Society.
To the new co-presidents. I pray.
This is from our commission to the Historical Society's current presidents, Harriet and Perry Outlaw. It's an excellent and local history award. With our greatest appreciation, we hereby present Harriet Outlaw, this award is in recognition of your unwavering support, unrelenting guidance, guidance, and ongoing commitment and dedicated service to the Baldwin County Historical Society. Baldwin County Commission, James E. Ball, District 1, Matthew P. McKenzie, District 2, Billy Joe Underwood, District 3, Charles Gruber, District 4, October 3rd, 2023.
Thank you. Honorable Commissioners, we are very, very thankful to you. Mr. Chairman, we are so happy that all of you have such long heritage in this county with your families and know how hard this society has worked. We're very sad that Harriet did not be with us, but she'll be recovering soon, and Perry also. But we're very honored to have our two new co-presidents that are here. We have co-presidents, it's such a lot of responsibility. My cousin Joanne Keller and Frances Rigby are the new co-presidents. We have Billy Nardell, who is our secretary, does a marvelous job in the organization. And even though he's been here longest of all of us, my cousin was not there when it was founded. But before I ask if any of them have anything to say, I would like to thank the Commissioners for this wonderful asset that you have here. Felicia is wonderful. She is wonderful. Everything we ask of her historically, she helps us with. So we are very blessed to have Felicia and your whole staff. And I want to say, I've really missed seeing all of y'all. I've been gone now for five years, miss seeing y'all on a regular basis. But I'm too old, I can't be a, anymore. Co-presidents, would you like to say anything?
I'm Joanne Keller. I'm one of the co-presidents who will take over officially in January. Thank you so much for all that you do for the Historical Society and for Baldwin County, and we really do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for the help and the future of Baldwin County. Thank you.
Billy Nardell was gonna pass, he does a wonderful job. Al, do you want to say something?
Well, I agree.
Okay. I just noticed that Al's gonna be up here soon for reenactment of the moving of the courthouse. I think y'all have that up here.
The stealing of the courthouse.
Soon, it's coming soon. But it's interesting, I'll remind you that the original courthouse for this county was at Blakely. And had it not moved from Blakely, y'all would be having your meetings in Blakely. So it's kind of interesting that 100 years from now, we're here in Baymanet, and Al will be up here for that. So thank you for all. And all of you are invited, October 22nd, at 2:00 p.m., we'll have it on the Blakely grounds, and thank you also for your support of Blakely. That 2,000 acre historic park is a marvel for this county. So we hope all of you will come. It'll be a short program, and we'll have opportunities for photos and things like that, so that 100 years from now, in this, it may be in the same building 100 years from now, somebody will be celebrating the 200th anniversary. Thank you much. We getting, we doing pictures? Again, thank you all so very much, and if y'all will, we'll take a photo up here at the front. Thank you. Commissioners, do I hear a motion that we adopt Resolution 2024-007 in support of the Baldwin County Historical Society?
To move?
Second. Got a motion made by Commissioner McKenzie, seconded by Commissioner Ball. Any further discussion? Hearing none. I just, I'd just like to say, you know, as I said a minute ago, Baldwin County is so rich in history, you know, it goes so far back, and you know, and we've got a lot of parks and stuff that signify this, and we're just real rich in history, and again, so thank you all so.
Yeah, I was, I didn't know if we were gonna vote and then do all the little talk, but we'll go ahead and do that. I just want to say that I had no really idea how much Baldwin County was involved in all the history stuff that Baldwin County does, and yes, our archive department, I know we're fixing to do a thing on that, but this state has 67 counties. I would put us up against anybody as far as we are the best. We have the best archives department, we have the best historical society. They don't have that in most of the counties in the state of Alabama. And there's some counties could probably afford it, but a lot of counties can't afford it. They just trying to get blacktop on the road or asphalt, we can call it blacktop, can't we? We know what that means, just like a red light's a traffic signal, but you know, to us that live in Alabama, it's a red light. But anyhow, we have something, and sometimes you don't realize what you have till you go somewhere else and see what they don't have. And as I've gotten to go around the state a little bit more in meeting with other county commissioners and talking to them, we are blessed, and I want to thank you guys, because if we didn't have the people who volunteered their time to come to these meetings and do these things, and I thank the rest of the commission for continuing to support the archives department, that we have a staff that does that, you know, y'all need to keep spreading the word, there's so many people don't, still don't know what our, about our archives department. It is so interesting. My problem is, I don't have time to go over there and sit and look, but if anybody's got the time to sit and look, I'm gonna do it one day. Again, I've done it twice, but it is so interesting to look up all of the historical stuff. But if we don't preserve our history, it'll be lost. So thank you guys.
I'd just like to say thank you for being here, and because when I was growing up, I didn't realize Baldwin County was this large and had so much history and wealth here. So I just want to say thank y'all for doing this. I'm really nervous because my former teacher is in the background, is Joanne Keller, so I have to be careful, make sure I do everything correct. So, but anyway, she was, she was, she was a very inspiration for me even during school, so thank you, Ms. Keller.
Absolutely, thank you, Judge, and everybody for coming and accepting this resolution today. Like the others have said, this is, you learn about, a lot about your county when you get into county government, especially in the county commission role. Growing up here, your whole life, you don't even see, or even get to experience the history here until you learn about it. And I knew we were rich in history, but not as, I've learned so much over the, over the years of sitting up here in this seat. And I especially enjoyed the tour at the Blakely State Park when we went on the boat, and you actually get to experience the whole entire. Mike Bun does a great job explaining the historic fact of Blakely State Park, and it's just, if anybody can ever get out there and listen to him talk, you will learn a lot just sitting in the car with him about Blakely. And then we've got so many other historic places in Baldwin County, all the way down from the beach, all the way to the tip of the northern end of this county, this historic in nature. So I was, if I'm not mistaken, we have a historic tour app. Just click on that if the public is unaware of that, and click on our historic tour app and enjoy what we have here in Baldwin County. It's a beautiful place to live and raise a family, and rich in history, so. With that being said, thank y'all today for coming and accepting the resolution.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Resolution is adopted. Right, next.
Okay, now we have some proclamations, and first up we have Archives Month. Okay, proclaiming October 2023 as Archives Month in Baldwin County, Alabama. Whereas archival records contain information of enduring value to the communities, institutions, and citizens of Baldwin County, and are essential to understanding the past, coping with the present, and preparing for the future. And whereas archival records protect the citizens, the rights of citizens, provide transparency and accountability for the actions of government, document the growth of our economy, institutions, and connect today's generations with the legacies of their forebears. And whereas archival records support research into health, environment, social, and economic issues, provide vital resources for the education of the young people, and form the basis for programs for the edification and enjoyment of the general public. Whereas Baldwin County, and whereas Baldwin County professional archivists and staff play a critical role in identifying, preserving, and making available these records. And whereas through these activities, future generations of Baldwin County can accurately study the past, learn from the accomplishments and the predecessors, trace their ancestors, understand their community's pride of place, confirm property rights, and maintain laws by celebrating the history of our county. And whereas, October has been declared National Archives Month in the United States by the Society of American Archives and International Council of Archives, and it's, and it is fitting that Baldwin County join in its observance, now therefore, be proclaimed by the Baldwin County Commission in regular session assembled that the October 23rd is hereby set aside as Archives Month in Baldwin County, Alabama.
I think, if I'm not mistaken, Ms. Felicia and her staff has got a little presentation for us on this one. Y'all don't want to say?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I am very grateful to be a part of the archives team. Thank you. I'm very grateful to be a part of the archive team. I've learned so much since I've been here, and as I've heard the Commissioners say, there is a lot of history here that even I myself didn't know that existed. But I'm very grateful to be able to learn and still be able to be a part of it. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Once again, it's a pleasure to stand before you all for this proclamation. Like Ms. Annette said, working for the archives is fascinating. You never go a day without learning something new about the county, and it's just continued to be a pleasure and a delight to work for the archives, Mrs. Anderson, and the county. Thank you.
Thank you, Brett.
Okay, it's me. Okay. Commissioners, we're often asked, what are you, who are you, what do you do? We're the building without windows, so I'm gonna ask, so try to answer a couple of questions that were asked a lot. What is archives? Archives are the local government's collection of documents that record important events in Baldwin County's history. The purpose of archives. We promote an efficient and accountable government. We are the keepers of the county records, and we're linked to our county government to serve as evidence, transparency, and accountability. In short, records are an indispensable ingredient for accountable local government. The records in the archives are also used to document the history and cultural heritage of our county. The archives ensure continued access to essential documents. How do archives ensure that Baldwin County Commission's mission is successfully executed? Citizens must be able to see through government workings to know exactly what goes on when public officials transact public business. Archives protect the rights of citizens and are part of a local identity. Local governments of all types create records. The daily lives of our citizens are reflected in these records, whether they are civil and criminal records, deeds, marriage, estate, and tax materials, or any other permanent record. We are here to ensure that those records are made accessible to the public. We encourage you to stop by the archives and become archives aware and meet those who work every day to preserve our county's history. Our facility is located here in Baymanet. Our address is 305 East Second Street. Our hours of operation are Monday through Friday, 8 o'clock until 4:30 p.m. The research room is available to the public by appointment on Monday through Thursday from 9:00 a.m. until 3:00 p.m. Connect with us. We want you to come and meet us and talk to us, and we would love to share more about the archives with you. So for more information, visit our webpage located on the Baldwin County Commission's website, and that address is there for you, and you can also follow us on Facebook. Now in observance of Archives Month, we have a series of events lined up to showcase our fascinating history. We have Old Time Days, that's gonna be this Saturday, October 7th, 2023, at Baldwin County Bicentennial Park. The time is 9 until 4:00. The cost is free, but we do accept generous donations. The purpose of Old Time Days, October 12th is National Farmers' Day. And Old Time Days is a celebration of Baldwin County's farming industry. We are celebrating by acknowledging the hard work that goes into feeding and supplying the nation. And these are some pictures from our event last year. We have a lot of plowing demonstrations. We have a tractor show. We also have a tractor parade at noon. Antique car show. Have a lot of activities for our young people to do. And say, if you want to get your parents out, invite the children, have plenty for the childrens to do. We have the Bayside Bells normally visit us, Ms. Agriculture, she showed up last year. There's just a few shots from that event. We have the Chess Thangs, live entertainment, the Unknown Bluegrass Band, and some local choirs that'll be, be there. On next Thursday, October 12th, removal of the Baldwin County seat from Daphne to Baymanet, and I want to put on record, it wasn't stolen, it was a legal transaction. But anyway, this is gonna be at the Baymanet Courthouse gazebo, 5:30 until 7:30. And this year, October 11th marks the 122nd anniversary of Removal Day. And this year, October 11th marks the 122nd anniversary of Removal Day. Just a few pictures from last year's event. We have many of our local officials that reenact, and this is so that we can try to make this event as historically accurate as possible. This is Judge Dolie. He's actually Judge Leslie Hall. Commissioner McKenzie participated last year. And Commissioner Underwood, she was a reporter. Commissioner Ball actually served as one of the Commissioners that went to bring home the county seat. And this is Mike Curry from our Parks Department. He plays Russell Dick. And our Chef. He actually plays Chef Brian. We also have a period of tire contest. We just asked that this year, you dress anywhere from 1820 to 1950, and you can write your own script and play that part any way that you would like for this year. And these are some of actually a presentation to Mr. Bert Blackman. We always can we recognize him during these events. The period of tire contest is there from ages three until 17 and 18 and older. This is Representative Donna Givens. And they really get all into it. And this is the mayor of Daphne. It's my understanding that Daphne will represent in pretty good numbers this year, so Baymanet may have their hands full, but we'll wait and see.
But we know the outcome.
Yes, yes. But we're gonna have a dessert course of dessert contest. That's always really good. Now, we know Baldwin County is really rich in haunted history as well. We see all the books and we hear all the stories. We often have visitors into the Archives telling us things, strange supernatural things that they're having. The Little Red Schoolhouse, someone says that there's a teacher that writes this arithmetic program on the board, and she rearranges the blocks in perfect order. And Blakely, they hear Josiah Blakely moaning through the park and dada, so on and so forth. So, because of this history, we are going to have the Haunted Hey Ride, bringing that back after three years. Terror at the Landing, a new location that's gonna be at Live Oak Landing this year, Friday and Saturday, October 20th and 21st, 5:00 until 9:00 p.m. The ride begins at dark, and children, it's $5 cost, ages three and under are free. And this is a picture right now, the guys are working hard, Mr. Lundy, at the park already. They're hanging Christmas lights and they're working on the Haunted Hey Ride. So, this is Live Oak Landing today if you ride down there. So, this is how it's looking right now. Okay, visit us at the Archives. We want you to become Archives aware. And we also encourage you, the public, to visit other Archives and museums throughout the county to learn of their collections as well. Thank you, Commissioners, for this proclamation and for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioners. Do I hear a motion that we proclaim October 2023 as Archive Month in Baldwin County, Alabama?
I'll make that motion.
Got a motion made by Commissioner Ball, seconded by Commissioner Underwood. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Let's have it. Thank you very much. Next.
Next up, we have a proclamation for the Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
have to wear readers. So, proclaiming October 2023 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Baldwin County, Alabama. Whereas domestic violence is a serious crime that affects people of all races, ages, genders, and income levels. And whereas domestic violence is widespread and affects more than 4 million Americans each year. And whereas one in three Americans have witnessed an incidence of domestic violence. And whereas children that grow up in violent homes are believed to be abused and neglected at a rate higher than the national average. And whereas domestic violence costs the nation billions of dollars annually in medical expenses, policing court costs, shelters, foster care, sick leave, absenteeism, and nonproductivity. And whereas only a coordinated community effort will put a stop to this heinous crime. And whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month provides an excellent opportunity for citizens to learn more about preventing domestic violence and to show support for the numerous organizations and individuals who provide critical advocacy services and assistance to victims. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Baldwin County Commission in regular session assembled that October 2023 is hereby set aside as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and the Commission urges the citizens of Baldwin County to work together to eliminate domestic violence from our community. We have Ryan Irvin here, and we want to present this proclamation to Representative Law. Yes, and you want to tell us just a little bit about?
Absolutely. Thank you, Commissioner Underwood. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Domestic Violence Awareness Month is October. Every month is Domestic Violence Awareness Month for those of us who do this work. I bring you greetings from our Board President, Andeline Fitzgerald, and our Board of Directors, and our awesome team of advocates at the Lighthouse. In September, we celebrated 29 years of service to this community. During this last fiscal year, we served over 1,400 individuals in our service area, which expands to all the way to Monroe County. Seventy percent of the individuals served were served in Baldwin County. We made about 5,500 referrals to community resources as well as other agency services. We provided about 3,500 shelter nights for emergency shelter as well as transitional housing. One in three women are victims of intimate partner violence. One in four men are victims or have experienced intimate partner violence in this country. We want to be there and available for that one in three, that one in four, or the children that are impacted as well. 1,765 services were provided for over 2,500 hours this last year. Ninety-nine percent of those individuals who received services indicated that they received information that would help them stay safe in the future. On October 19th, during the Call of Action Week for Domestic Violence Awareness Month, we will be holding our annual Domestic Violence Vigil at Mayday Park in Daphne at 6:30. If your schedules allow, please join us. And again, I thank you for declaring Domestic Violence Awareness Month, or October Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and joining us and communicating to the community and to victims and survivors that the work that we do is important, that their lives matter. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Commissioners. Do I hear a motion that we proclaim October 2023 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month?
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner McKenzie, seconded by Commissioner Underwood. Any further discussion?
I just want to say that I'm thankful we have these services available from the Lighthouse and that we are, you know, being able to be an advocate for awareness. I wish we didn't have to. I wish we didn't have to have that jail over there. I wish we didn't, but but we know that as long as we live on this earth, there's gonna be bad things happen. And if people are out there and they don't know what these different abuskey groups that are out there to help with domestic violence, there is no excuse for abuse. We know that. There is no excuse for abuse. But if you've never known of what the Lighthouse is or some of the other groups that that help people, more than likely, you will before your life is ended here on earth, either maybe not yourself personally, maybe a family member, maybe a friend, maybe a coworker. At least we know that we have somebody there that can that can help these people. And that percentage you gave us said that almost almost 100% of those people felt like that they could, they got the skill set and the tools that they needed to prevent this from happening to them again legally. You know, I want them to do something that would land them in criminal problems, although I think we probably all have that in us that we would, you know, do what we could to protect our loved ones, but we know that we have to live within the letter of the law. But thank you so much, Ryan, for always being that advocate. And if you've never been to the vigil, I've been to the one in Robertsdale when y'all have that one, and it's just, I don't know the words to say when you hear those victims actually speak out and that they have actually overcome. I actually saw a lady that was at one of those. I don't remember her name, but she came up to me and she said, I met you at that vigil and thank you so much for coming and for being a voice to help other people. You know, I saw a girl that I don't know if she's ever been to your facility or anything, but she was like, I wish I could be like you. I wish I could be stronger and be, I said, you can. I said, you can. And so, that's what we're here for, is to awareness and to give people that, give them that voice. And maybe you got somebody that can't speak for themselves, and maybe you can speak for them and help them. So, thank you.
I'd just like to say, Ms. Irvin, thank you for what you do. And it's tough. I've seen it too in my head. We used to call them rolling domestic violence because I was a state trooper, so I always seen them on the road, and that was tough. It was hard. So, thank you for what you do for the citizens here of Baldwin County in the domestic violence. But thank you.
Yes, this is one of those things every year that when we get to this, it's like I said, something near and dear to my heart. I would hope people that's watching this meeting today will understand that we're in here today, recognizing October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. As you stated, every day is Domestic Violence Awareness because it happens all the time. I would encourage people to seek out and look for the phone numbers for the Lighthouse. If you're in the position where you need to make a phone call, there's always gonna be somebody that answers that phone, and there's gonna always be somebody that will talk you through whatever you're going through. You don't have to be scared anymore. So, reach out and call the Lighthouse. Something that I like, every time that you come, we get a little goody bag, and there's something that's unrecognized, it's the first time I've seen it in here, is elderly abuse. I mean, this is something that's never talked about, it's never thought about, but when you're like me, Commissioner Underwood, and whatever, and you have to make decisions to place your parents in the hands of other individuals that are supposed to take care of them, I have seen with my own eyes what elder abuse is.
Yes.
And it's up to you as the children of these parents, if you put them somewhere, you need to constantly keep your eyes on them and monitor them. You know your family. The people that are taking care of them don't know them like you. And then, and the sad thing about elder abuse is not too many of them speak out about it because they don't even know they're being abused. But I just looked at some of these statistics. This happens to 6 million Americans every year. There's other avenues for this. There's people that help you out with elder abuse, if that is going on with your family members, but I just wanted to thank you for including this because we know about the children, we know about the women, and even the men sometimes, and but the seniors often forgot about when it comes to this category, and they're a victim as well. They're just unfortunately, their minds sometime aren't sharp enough to understand it. So, thank you for bringing awareness to every single aspect of life that deals with domestic violence. And it's always an honor and privilege to have you here, and I'm proud to be partnering with y'all for this month and for every single other 11 months out of the year, we partner with y'all. So, thank you.
I'd just like to say thank you so very much for what you do for the citizens of this county. I wish we didn't have it, but we've, you know, one domestic violence is too much. And I know that, you know, y'all do a fantastic job of trying to help these people that are victims of stuff that is really not necessary. I mean, you know, so appreciate all that y'all do, and like I said, with the seniors and everything else, you know, you'd be surprised how many seniors are victims of abuse by their own children. So, you know, and that's what's that's what's hurt. Yeah. But anyway, with that being said, do I hear a motion that we adopt this proclamation?
I think we just got a call for the vote, right?
Yep. Just gotta call.
Just call vote.
Okay. All right. We have a motion by Commissioner McKenzie.
I got a motion made by Commissioner McKenzie, seconded by Commissioner Underwood. No further discussion. If all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you again so much.
All right. Next.
Yes, sir. We have a proclamation for Walk and Roll to School Month.
Ms. Charlene couldn't be here. Lee, but we do have Sarah, she's and Ms. Jessica, they're both on the committee. I want to read the proclamation real quick. Proclaiming October 2023 as Walk and Roll to School Month in Baldwin County, Alabama. Whereas the Baldwin County Commission supports policies and programs that focus on health and wellness and healthier community environments. And whereas the health and safety of children is the highest concern of the citizens of Baldwin County. And whereas walking and biking can help enhance the health and overall physical activity of children, improve air quality and the environment, and reduce traffic congestion and speed in and around school zones. And whereas safe routes to school is a national and an international movement to create safe, convenient, and fun opportunities for children to walk and bike to school. And whereas safe routes to school efforts help remove barriers to walk and biking to schools through improvement of infrastructure and facilities, and the creation of education, encouragement, engineering, enforcement, and evaluation programs. And whereas Baldwin County Commission recognizes the importance of making walking and biking to school a safe activity. And whereas October is International Walk to School Month, which is an opportunity to highlight and further safe routes to school initiatives. And to whereas International Walk to School Day is a fun event that inspires the community to come together and promote health and safer routes for children to walk and bike to school. And whereas schools in Baldwin County will participate in International Walk to School Day in the month of October, now therefore be it proclaimed by the Baldwin County Commission in regular session assembled that October 2023 is hereby set aside as Walk and Roll to School Month in Baldwin County, Alabama. to walk and biking to schools through improvement of infrastructure and facilities and the creation of education, encouragement, engineering, enforcement, and evaluation programs. And whereas Baldwin County Commission recognizes the importance of making walking and biking to school a safe activity, and whereas October is International Walk to School Month, which is an opportunity to highlight and further safe routes to school initiatives, and to whereas International Walk to School Day is a fun event that inspires the community to come together and promote health and safer routes for children to walk and bike to school, and whereas schools in Baldwin County will participate in International Walk to School Day in the month of October, now therefore be proclaimed by the Baldwin County Commission in regular session assembled that October 2023 is hereby set aside as Walk and Roll to School Month in Baldwin County, Alabama.
We would like to thank the Commission on behalf of the Safe House to School Coalition for supporting us in our endeavors and proclaiming this month of this year as Walk and Roll to School Day Month. This helps us spread the awareness and continue to show the benefits of safe routes to school. We have some schools that are planning their walks for tomorrow to correlate with the international dates, and we are still waiting to hear from other schools from the dates that they'll choose for this month. But again, we thank you so much for your support.
All right, Commissioners, do I hear a motion that we proclaim October as Walk and Roll to School Month?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Got a motion made by Commissioner Underwood, seconded by Commissioner McKenzie to proclaim October as Walk and Roll to School Month. Any further discussion?
The only thing that I would like to say, if you don't mind, Commissioner Underwood, is that, you know, when I first got on the commission, I was asked to be part of that committee, and I've learned a lot so far with the school systems that we have, the schools that we have, and thank you, Sarah and Jessica, for helping me. But it just seems like we need to get more schools involved. And I know some of it's barriers because of concrete sidewalks, they can't walk to the schools, but we just need to get the school system more involved. I think if we do that, I think it would help, you know, the students that we have here in Baldwin County, because it is a good thing. My wife does it at Somerville, and it's just an awesome thing to see these kids get out and walk, you know, and relax before they have to get into that environment where they have to have discipline. But it's good to see them laugh and have a good time. So, but thank you, Jessica and Sarah. Thank you very much. That's all.
Yes, and thank you, Commissioner McKenzie, for being on that committee. Before you were elected, Ms. Charlene had invited us to walk, and some of the Commissioners were able to walk, and I finally made it over there to Fairhope West, Fairhope West Elementary. And I was so impressed that morning with Ms. Charlene, with what she has accomplished. They do it every day of school. This is not a once in a, you know, celebrate National Day, do it on this day, do it on whenever, you get a whim to do it. But I feel like if we keep going, we have made major strides since that time, and they formed that committee, and with Sarah being involved and all the other people. So thank you for being on that committee. I want to also compliment your wife, who's a teacher at Somerville School, for getting it at Somerville, because you guys know I am from Somerville. I know the layout of that little town. It's laid out on an old railroad grid back in the day, whenever the forefathers elected, long before my family came around, before they bypassed Somerville with the highway. We look back today and say, you know, people used to say, "Oh, man, you just put a nail in their coffin when they bypassed you with the highway." I think that it's going to be the last little hamlet that's left in Baldwin County, but it's a perfect setting for this walk to school. Like you said, not every school has been laid out in a neighborhood where it is conducive for the kids to walk. It almost breaks my heart on some of these schools that are put in areas where the speed limit is 55 or more miles per hour, and it's like, you'll never be able to walk to school in some of these areas. It's not my decision where schools are located, but for the ones who are, had the forethought to put these in neighborhoods where they're walkable, I know, I got a huge compliment from the last one that your wife organized that wasn't able to be there, how well it went down. But, you know, there's a little park there by where the old railroad used to go through, and it's a perfect drop off where the parents can drop their kids off. There's a gazebo for when it's raining. In Fairhope, if I'm not mistaken, at Fairhope West, it is rain or shine, cold or hot, only if it's lightning. It's the only time she said they don't do this. I don't know if you guys have noticed, and some of you might be a part of this, but people line up for miles to pick their children up and take their children to school. This also helps to eliminate, Matt, I think Matt does that, this helps eliminate some of that traffic congestion that goes on with dropping your children off at school. So I really hope that the schools that live in the, I mean, that exist in the neighborhood areas where there are walkable opportunities, that they will jump on board. And if nothing else, encourage some of the leaders to go over there and walk with Ms. Charlene on a daily basis and see how excited these children are. They get this little necklace, it's got like little, it almost looks like dog tags or something like that. That's not what mine is. I just happen to have a necklace similar, but they get like an A plus, and they get different little things. They get, I think they get a T-shirt after they do certain things. So whatever it takes, an incentive or an award or whatever. I grew up in where I wasn't able to ride a bus to school because I lived too close to the elementary school. So I was used to riding my bike, or I don't know if kids ride their bikes to school anymore. I don't really see that, but ride your bike, walk to school. We didn't have sidewalks back then. You walked in the road. But they closed off one of those roads. But it is so exciting to see this little walking school bus is what it's called. And yeah, I talked a lot again, I'm sorry. But thank you, and thank you, Commissioner McKenzie, for being a part of that. I'm glad that the Commission has embraced it and along with the help from the MPO, get it going. Thank you.
I just, everything she just said, thank y'all. Thank y'all for what you do. I would like to see a little bit more around in this area, and maybe one day that will happen, because we have a perfect area around here for walking to school, so.
That's right.
You know, at least at our elementary school that was just right a couple blocks away. So, that being said, just thank y'all, and it's an honor to be a part of this proclamation as well. Good program.
Just, I thank y'all for, you know, getting involved in this and getting the Commission involved in it. You know, it's the little things that make the big things happen. And we appreciate, you know, what all of y'all do. And Commissioner McKenzie, thank you for sitting on that committee. Okay. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you very much.
Okay, yes, sir. We have no public hearings, nothing under other staff recommendations. The two items under ARPA and also the addenda were all handled in the consent agenda, so we're now to commission requests.
All right. Next is the consent agenda, I mean, commission request.
I don't have any.
No request, okay. No senior staff. Attorney's report?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We will have two brief executive session items today. Should be about five, 10 minutes each. Shouldn't be too long.
All right. Press questions, I mean, public comments? Any none? Press questions? Any none? Commission comments?
I do.
Go ahead and start.
Can I start? I wanted to, I was talking to some of our staff, and there's one where we didn't do a resolution or anything to commemorate it, but I just wanted to make a notation that this is Happy Customer Service Week. The first week of October is always Happy Customer Service Week, and we have our Citizen Service Center, and honestly, we serve the public, we work for the public, so our entire organization is customer service. And I think we need to recognize those that work in that, and we as well. You know, one time I had this lady want to meet him. She wanted me to sell Mary Kay makeup. I'm sure some of you ladies have been in that. Nothing wrong with Mary Kay, it's a good product, but I wasn't interested in being a Mary Kay salesperson, but I went with her, make her happy, listen to the spiel. I know.
You'd be good.
I would be good at it. I would be trying to sell you some of the men's products, probably. But anyways, I remember her saying that it don't matter how bad you feel, you might be just got the flu and feeling awful, but if that phone rings and it's a customer, you better say, "Hi, how are you doing?" And so, that was a long time ago. I was probably about 20 years old when I got drugged with that Mary Kay thing. But that's how we need to treat our people. We don't need to have a bad day if we're at work. We need to treat that customer because they may not always be right, but we need to make them feel good, not make them feel bad. I know what it's like to be made to feel bad, and that just, that's not the way we need to be. But I think we need to recognize that this is Happy Customer Service Week. I don't think I think of anything else, but thank the rest of the staff for everything.
And there was something else. It wasn't the custodian.
It was yesterday.
It was yesterday, so, you know, I just wanted to recognize them, our custodians. And our employees, thank you for everything that you've done for us. And for the chairman over budget, thank you for getting us through that budget. I'm glad that's over with, and I'm thankful that we're able to help our employees. But other than that's all I've got.
Mr. Chairman, it's just a pleasure to be back after vacation that I did not plan to take.
Glad to have you back.
But yes, you know, it was kind of like my, one of those wake-up calls where I was told by my higher power to kind of step down for just a minute and recover for some things, and I'm back and stronger and better than ever, and hopefully I won't have to take that vacation anymore. But I appreciate stepping up and everybody being present when I was absent, because all it takes is for one more to be sick, and then we can't have a meeting, so. But other than that, I was going to piggyback off what Matt said, because we didn't have a meeting really where we expressed thanks and gratitude towards everybody that worked towards what I consider to be one of the best budgets that we've ever presented. You know, there could be special thanks that goes out to everybody, but there's just highlights with our administrator coming in brand new on this, taking the reins. Beth coming in brand new, taking on the reins. There was a lot of new people involved as well with some of the older senior staff that has been here for a while, that worked together with us to present one of the best budgets I've ever seen. And we were definitely more employee focused on this one. And I've been getting the emails and the thank you cards, and we really appreciate it, and we are so fortunate to be in a situation where this year in particular, we could help out our employees. I think if I'm not mistaken, that was our main goal from the very start of this budget cycle. We never wavered from that goal, and we made it happen, and thank each and every individual. And I can't even name them all, but just thank y'all for coming together and presenting your budgets, making the cuts that you had to make, so other people could benefit from what we did. So, with that being said, like I said, it's good to be back here. I missed it.
First of all, good to have you back. Missed you while you was gone, you know, and I'm glad that you're doing very well. Thank the staff, you know, for what all they do. You know, getting this agenda, it's not a really easy task. The amount of items that has to be researched and make sure everything is done so that we have a good, sound agenda, and it's pertaining to business that's happening within Baldwin County for our citizens. You know, we've had several proclamations and resolutions this morning, and, you know, a lot of those have a very big meaning, you know. It's archived, it's, you know, it's protecting, you know, our history. You know, then we also have the History Month, which was very important in Baldwin County, because, you know, you go back to, you know, way back to all the wars and everything that happened, you know, Fort Morgan was, served very many wars. I think the last one it was, was World War II, and I think the first one was World War I. I mean, and, well, I think it was before that, you know, the Civil War. You know, so, I mean, there's so much history here. I mean, I don't think there's a corner of Baldwin County that you can't go to that something historically did not happen in it.
Yeah, we're older than, we're older than the state.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And actually, you know, we were, you know, we were part of the Mississippi Territory at one time. And we owned a part of Florida at one time as well as in Baldwin County, but that's been a long time ago. But anyway, you know, again, thank y'all so very much. With that being said, Mr. Attorney?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would recommend that the Commission adopt a motion adjourning this meeting and convening an executive session to discuss the general reputation and character, physical condition, professional competence, or mental health of individuals, or subject to limitations set out herein to discuss the job performance of certain public employees, and to discuss with your attorney the legal ramifications of and legal options for pending litigation, controversies not yet being litigated but eminently likely to be litigated, or eminently likely to be litigated if the governmental body pursues a proposed course of action. I am an attorney licensed to practice law in Alabama, and this exception is applicable to the planned discussion. So, Mr. Chairman, after the vote, just announce that we will not reconvene.
I make a motion, we take attorney's recommendation and go into executive session.
Got a motion made by Commissioner Baldwin, seconded by Commissioner McKenzie, to go into executive session as stated by the attorney, and possibly 10 minutes or so.
Will not reconvene.
So, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned and we will not return.